Doug, you see Senator Fallon on there?
What was his name?
Pat Fallon. He's supposed to be joining as he said.
Well, are you gonna open up Friday at twenty five this thing?
No, I'm waiting for fifty. Uh, no, wait for fifty. Yep.
If we go fifty, we have less than the required number of cases. Can we?
Doug, if you see him join, will you let me know?
Yeah, for your other certain number of cases.
Okay, it's six o'clock. Let's get started. Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll start the meeting and thank y'all for joining. And for those of you who are watching by Zoom, for some reason tonight is asking for a password, and we didn't know that until just a few minutes ago. So if you want to join the meeting, the password for Zoom is eight one four three five six. That's eight one four three five six. Now, that's the password. The Zoom meeting ID, well, you probably already know it because you're watching us by Zoom now. So anyway, the Zoom meeting ID is eight seven six three eight zero five four nine seven nine. And Doug, I think we have Pastor Alan McCauley on there with us. He's gonna do our invocation for tonight. You there?
Good evening.
Say again?
Good evening to you.
Oh, good evening. If you'll lead us in prayer, Pastor, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Father, gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight very grateful for all of your many blessings upon our community. I thank you, Lord, for our city council members and our mayor, all those who will be conducting the city's business tonight. I pray God would lead them, give them wisdom, help them to make decisions that are in the best interest of our community and in a way that will bring you glory. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. If you'll join us in the pledge, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mike, you can probably attend if you can sit out there in the hallway. Mike, you can probably attend if you can sit out there in the hallway. Okay, Doug, is Senator Fallon there? He's not there. Okay. The next item on the first item on the agenda is the items of community interest. I don't have anything to say. I thought maybe if somebody had zoomed in here had something they might want to say. If not, does anyone on the council have something to say?
Yeah, I have one question. Where did our city manager report go? We're not doing one this week?
We're not doing one this week.
Okay.
Okay, going on the public comments, anyone have anything to say in public comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next agenda item, number six. Consent agenda items, we have four. We'll talk about the first three first. The first one is approval of the minutes from the April thirteenth regular meeting. Item number two is Resolution twenty twenty thirteen, resolution authorizing the city manager to write off uncollected utility accounts receivables over fifteen months delinquent. And Resolution twenty twenty fourteen, resolution authorizing the city manager to write off uncollected library overdue fines over fifteen months delinquent. And the next one is to approve the quarterly financial statement ending March twenty twenty. And I think Carrie Moore, are you on there, Carrie, to give us that report? You there, Carrie?
I'm there, Carrie.
Go ahead. We can't hear you, Carrie. Carrie, we can't hear you. Is that me feeding back? What's it look like, Doug?
She's open.
Well, since we can't make contact with Carrie, we'll just have to move on. And if maybe she can come back later, we can pick her up and get the financial statement. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, new business ordinance.
We need to approve this.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we need to vote on the, I got, sorry, I got carried away there. We need to vote. We need to vote on the approval of the agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve these consent agenda items? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Love, we've got you first. Mr. Kent, how do you vote? Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. I'm sorry, I got out of whack there because of not making contact with Ms. Moore. Okay, new business ordinance twenty twenty oh six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bowie, Texas, amending chapter three, building and construction, article three dash, three dot one zero zero, building code, by adding a new section three dot one oh four to be entitled cross connection control program, providing a repealing clause and severability clause establishing penalties for the violation of these restrictions and provisions for their enforcement and finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law. Bert, do you have something to say about that?
Yes, we got some information from the city council. Even though what they showed with our new plumbing ordinance or plumbing code in their communication, they wanted us to do a cross connected control program ordinance to make sure that we following exactly what they say. And that's all they did, which is in response to their request.
I do have a question. This is for sprinkler system cross contamination backflow valve installed in section once a year. We've had that prior to this, because when I had mine, I had to have it inspected annually.
Yeah, we do.
So this is just reenforcement?
Yeah, that's what they wanted. And it's already in our fund, but they wanted it. And this is for, we use their ordinance, backflow ordinance, at our, so.
My only concern with this is the cost that it, that each household who has a sprinkler system inherits because they have to have a backflow valve installed and inspected each and every year.
That's right.
So it's gonna cost every house sixteen bucks or seventeen bucks.
That's not us, that's the same cost.
Okay. We don't have any choice here?
No.
Okay. I don't know why we're running on that.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion about this ordinance? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance. Have a second? Okay. Mr. Kent, how do you vote?
I have no choice. Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Love?
Aye.
Mr. Malone? Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to one. Okay, moving on to. Moving on to the next item here, number two, consider a contract for Selma Park. Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to try Carrie?
Oh, yes, if she's there. Carrie, you there? Yeah, go ahead and give it a floor. Any questions?
And this report is through the end of March?
I'm sorry?
This report is through the end of March? So we haven't seen the impact of COVID yet? We have not seen the impact of COVID?
We have, we're with.
I didn't hear what she said.
Not really.
Not really. Any other questions? Okay, then we will entertain a motion to vote on that one. We, I guess we can vote on that one. We've already done, okay, let it be then. Okay, thanks, Carrie. Okay, under new business, item number two, consider a contract for Selma Park Operations Services. And I think we have a contract. It's my understanding we've made an offer to a person to be the camp host at Selma Park. Is that right, Bert?
That's correct. If that's a contract position, that's the contract. There's no benefits that go with that job. It's just a month to deal. We readvertised because of the way we're making reservations now via computer. We had to have somebody that was computer literate and this lady did. So Clyde recommended that we approve that.
You say this is a month to month contract?
Actually, it's last six months, the season.
Okay. Any questions?
Is this the same contract we had before?
Yes, exactly.
Same pay as before?
Same pay, yeah.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda item?
I made a motion to accept.
Okay. Ms. Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Malone? Mr. Love?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Kent?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is number three, consider a request from Mr. Patel at Best Western Inn and Suites for tax relief. And in your packet, there's a letter I received from Mr. Patel. And since I got this letter last week, I've also got another request from Jimmy Patel, who's also the owner manager of America's Best Value Inn out there on the freeway. He's asking for the same relief. So do y'all want to discuss this?
Oh, Mr. Patel, I've done the mountain of requests. Is not legal. We can't just say you can't pay your taxes. We don't have that authority. There are some, I talked to the Texas Hotel Legislative Association today, to Scott Johnson, their president, and let me find my notes. The only thing that we could do to grant them any relief would be under subchapter three eighty of the Texas Municipal Code. There is a way that we can use the tax money for grants or loans for economic recovery. And what that would constitute would be we would pick, you know, out of what hotel motel funds are available, we could designate an amount, let's say ten thousand dollars, just to have a round number. We're gonna use ten thousand dollars as an economic recovery grant pool for hotels within the city limits of Bowie, Texas. Then what they would have to do, we'd have to come up with a grant application. They would fill out the application. And then they would be eligible for a percent of that grant pool based on what they paid in previous years. So in other words, if they paid in thirty percent of the overall income of the hotel motel tax last year, then they would be eligible for thirty percent of this ten thousand dollar grant pool. So obviously, it's gonna take even a little bit more. I'm sure that we'd have to, you know, consult T M L or Che or somebody about how we write this application. We need to talk to Carrie about what's budgeted versus what we had on account and what is might possibly a little bit excess or leftover, if there is any. And then what we budgeted and what is gonna come in is gonna be drastically different. So we're gonna have to cut everybody, I don't know how much all gonna work at this point. I don't wanna say anything because I don't wanna get this all screwed. But the budget would have to change that was presented back in Jan, February. Then, you know, we have to take that pool money and then somebody would have to administer it. Basically, what would happen is it's not a grant of cash. What would be would be a grant that is a credit toward what they owe in hotel motel. So if they're paid up to date, then they would basically submit their hotel motel tax report each month, but not have to make a payment until they have run through that amount of grant money. So there's no actual cash changing hands. It's a, and then somebody's gonna have to administer that. Somebody's actually gonna have to administer the applications, let people know what they've been awarded. Then they've got to come in and somebody's gotta balance, you know, we'll have to keep a separate set of books that says, this is what your grant amount is, this is what you've used up. Okay, you're out of grant money now. You owe us.
Since I understand you, thank you for doing that research, Diane. It's my understanding we have to have this pool of money set up beforehand. And if we had that and they had some money in there, they could apply that to this request here. But since we don't have that flush fund, it's not, there's nothing there.
There's nothing there right now. I mean, I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm just saying that we're going to have to set it all up to be able to.
But if we, it's my understanding also that if I go out there and rent a room, let's say for a hundred dollars, I pay a hundred dollars for that room, then there's a tax, sales tax?
Six percent, there's an eight and a quarter percent.
Sales tax, the hotel tax?
And then the six percent.
Occupancy?
Yeah, the hotel occupancy.
So when that room is rented, the hotels collect that money. So they've already got that money.
Right.
But they're asking to be, have that waived.
Okay, so let me just play devil's advocate for a second.
Go for it.
Tell me why that would be different than Angie Salon selling products and collecting sales tax and then having to remit it. Why, how do you signal out, single out one entity or one type of service and give them a break and not give that same break to everybody else in town?
To do it for the others?
Well, not just that, but.
We'll talk about all the other businesses in town that weren't eligible for TPP money, weren't eligible.
I'll take a tax code. You want to vote it in right now?
But have been closed for months on end. We're giving the hotel motel people this break. We're not gonna give it to anybody else.
Right, I agree.
Or people that are gonna say, okay, we gave the hotels a six percent tax, please, I want a six percent reduction on my property.
Exactly. Okay.
It is a can of worms that may be something we don't wanna get into. I'm just saying, the way the letter was written, we can't do it. It's not legal.
Okay.
There is a legal way we could give them relief if that is a can of worms we wish to open.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a problem with saying, okay, we're going to not, we're gonna tell you, you can not, you know, not pay us the tax. If we as a city want to set up some sort of fund for businesses to apply to and get relief that's open to all businesses, then I'm, I'm, you know, I'm open to that.
Can't do that with hotel motel money, though.
No, I mean, this would just have to be something that we as a city choose to do. But to single out and say, we're gonna help this business, but we're not gonna help this business, I don't think I can get behind that.
Okay, let me give you a different perspective, because they're paying the eight point two five percent tax. They're not asking for relief on that, which is what Angie pays.
I think they are.
No, they're not, which is what Angie is asking for is, you know, she pays the eight and quarters percent as well. What they're asking for is the over and above.
The six percent hotel motel.
The sales tax, the six percent additional tax that they are taxed as a hospitality industry.
It's a pass through. They charge their clients.
Right, and it comes to us.
Just turn it over, yeah. So it's not their money.
Right. They're, they're collecting it and it comes to us. It's our money. And they're asking not to pay us our money.
Right.
So is this pool, is this, does it count for also the taxes they've already collected? You know, because I'm sure they've got, it's like sales tax, they've got it collected in account and at the end of the quarter they pay it.
Right.
Does it help them pay that or is it for future taxes off of road trip?
Something we would have to set up.
Okay.
You know, we have to say, okay, this is only eligible for three months or six months or, you know, however.
I mean, because if taxes are already collected and they're as taxes, they need to be paid as taxes and then do.
And if I understand correctly, and I don't quote because I haven't had a chance to talk to Carrie, I've been too busy talking to lawyers, but some of our hotels are current and some are a quarter behind.
Right.
To my knowledge. Carrie might wanna chime in on that if that's correct or not. At last I had heard, we've got some that are current and some that are behind. So, yeah, like I said, it is a huge can of worms.
Yeah.
I was just trying to get all the details pertaining to the request.
Yeah.
And the way it's written, we cannot do it.
Okay.
There is a way we could provide relief if that is a can of worms we wish to open.
It's not a lot of money. You know, if they're renting ten rooms and it's six dollars a room, we're talking sixty bucks.
Yeah.
So it's not a lot of money. I understand all the big steps that we would have to do.
It's not a lot of money right now, but.
But there's a lot of cities that have granted relief to the hospitality industry as a whole, hotels included, that have given them that tax relief of not paying that money to the four A, four B corporations. So.
Doug, since we don't have that plan in effect, we can't do that.
We can't do anything until we decide whether we want to research putting a plan like that in place. So the only vote we should really take on this would be, do we wanna have Carrie and Bert work on developing some kind of plan? Or is this a can of worms we just don't wanna get anywhere near?
So what's? Just this one?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
One thing that we can do is give them extra time to pay. That's all we can do. I can't do it. Carrie can't do it. The mayor can. How are the councilmen?
Yeah, but we could give everybody a thirty or sixty day extension on A.
Three days, three days in the past, but they still owe them.
This is as far as hotel motels, what you're saying, for all hotels?
Yeah, hotel motel.
I don't have a. But then how do we give, you know, we can't give them, we can't give the salons the ability to defer. Well, actually, I think this, Bert, didn't the state give salon, give everybody an extension on submitting their sales tax receipts?
Till May the fifteenth.
Yeah. So we could, you know, we could give them until May the fifteenth to catch up.
The only thing we're giving relief on right now is utility bill.
Late fees. What does the council want to do? What do y'all want to do with this request here?
My issue with giving people extensions is you're not, you're not, right, you're not truly helping anybody because all you're doing is delaying the fact that they have to pay it. So I should just let that happen, nobody makes.
Just let, move on. Okay?
I think that this whole COVID nineteen thing is gonna cost all of us together. And everyone is gonna take a hit on this, no matter what we do. I would love to help these people, but I think this is just gonna be their part across the country.
I have a, I feel sorry. I think these people are hit worse than anybody else. I, I think this industry's been hit worse than.
It has been.
I'm sure it is. Nobody's going any further.
I would agree with you except for the fact that, you know, our nail salons and beauty salons have been plugged into a restaurant and they've been shut.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least they've got one to nine people coming in and renting a room.
And they're collecting, they're collecting that rent money and the tax money. So they've got the money and they're in.
Yeah, I mean, they've got a little bit coming in where our salons have been dead, closed. There's no income. And they've still got rent due. They've still got.
Sandy, can we just move on without taking a vote on this? Okay, then we'll just move on to the next agenda item. Number four, consider COVID nineteen measures. I put this on the agenda last week because I didn't know what the governor was gonna do today. And I was hoping when Governor Abbott had his press conference today, he would, he would, oh, Pat, okay. Pat Fallon, I understand you just checked in. Do you have something you'd like to tell us, Senator Fallon?
Hello, how are you, folks? Thanks for having me on. I appreciate it. Sorry, as you may imagine with the governor's announcement, I'm a little busy with conference call. And so I, real quickly, just wanted to let you know from the station.
Would we lose you? Hello, Pat? Well, technology, technology. Well, Doug, if you see him or hear him come back on, we'll just let him chime in. Hello, can you hear me? Well, I'll just continue talking. And Senator, if you get back in, just holler and we'll let you have the floor and talk. But I talked to several of you councilmen over the last few days, and we heard what happened last week down in Colleyville. They opened up partially their city. And then Friday, Wichita Falls did it. And it's my understanding Nakona did some of this over the weekend. So I think we need to open our city back up. We need to open our state up. We need to open our country up. The world needs to be opened up and get people back to work and get our economy going again. So I know the governor said today he's gonna let restaurants and some other establishments open May the first, which is Friday. And his orders are gonna expire that day. Is Senator there?
You up there? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. Is it okay? Is it clear?
Yes, go ahead. You have the floor.
Oh, wonderful. Well, I don't know what you heard from the last one, but anyhow, five weeks ago, the president was on a call with the governor and lieutenant governor. As soon as they got off that call, they had a conference call with the Texas Senate. And that call started like this. This is gonna be like World War Two. This is gonna be the greatest challenge our country is facing against here in history. Most likely, three billion Americans will die in the next few months. A hundred thousand Texans by the end of April. Our economy will be wrecked, fifty percent unemployment, twice that of a great depression. We will be, our hospitals will be overrun by middle of April, and we will have to choose who lives and who dies because we won't have enough ventilators. That's the call, and that's how it began. I was nauseous and almost vomited. Now, as we know, now being the April twenty seventh, none of that occurred. One death is one too many. But it was nothing like what was painted in. Your point, when you did your comments, I couldn't agree more that. So I just wanted to share some facts and figures quickly. First, we have twenty one thousand hospital beds in Texas that are reserved for COVID nineteen patients. And today, as of today, about fifteen hundred and fifty of those beds are occupied. So we're about seven percent occupancy rate. And that occupancy hasn't really gone up or down much. It's been bouncing around between eleven hundred and fifteen hundred. So we have the capacity now. Every person in this country that has needed a ventilator has gotten one. Every person in this country that has needed a hospital bed has gotten one. And we're fortunate in that regard. On the P P E, on the personal protection equipment for medical staff and our frontline folks, we have a pretty good go of it with the supply chain and stockpiles. Gowns, medical gowns are something that we're still lacking. And so there's a, there's a market for the state that purchased. And as far as Texas, vis a vis other states goes, we're one of the least hit on a protective basis. We're about fortieth with the number of confirmed cases and forty first in the number of deaths. And I think it's per billion, we're at twenty four. New York State's at like twelve hundred, to give you a little frame of reference. And they're about one third of our population. So we've been blessed in that regard. It's odd to say you're blessed when you have six hundred deaths. But it could have been so much worse. And one death is too many. But it could have been so much worse and one death is too many. But I would analyze it in a lot of ways like a foxhole. We had to go into a foxhole and bunker down for several weeks. But now it's time to get out of foxhole.
Yes.
We can't in a battle stay in the foxhole forever because they're going to spike you with their artillery they're going to give you. So we got to get out, we got to keep moving. And another thing that they don't really talk that much about in the mainstream media is that the overwhelming number of folks that have perished because of this virus were over sixty-five and/or had underlying health conditions. What CNN likes to do is show you the healthy thirty-one-year-old that died of this. That is extraordinarily rare. And that happens with a lot of other health.
Yep.
People die of things other than COVID nineteen. This is not COVID versus the economy. This is COVID versus health. This is COVID versus the country. This is COVID versus the economy. It's COVID versus a lot of people. Because what about the person that needs a stent? What about the woman that needs to get, uh, a breast cancer exam and a spread, a breast cancer screening? What about the person that needs, uh, to get a colonoscopy? There are a lot, what about the fellow that has chest pains and doesn't want to go to the hospital because he's been scared to the dickens about this virus? So nobody's counting those. So as a net debt, we have to get moving. And, um, I'm enthused about some of the, what the governor did today. I personally would like to see this gone further. And I, I have notes from that and some, we have, we're also writing up some clarification, some clarifying questions for the governor and staff. I have dozens already from my own staff, myself, and from folks around the district that have been asking. So feel free to, to ask any questions that you have for me. And again, thanks for allowing me to join.
Absolutely, Senator. We thank you for taking your time to join us. And those questions that you've collected or are collecting, can you make those, uh, available to us?
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, for instance, just like some of, just example, um, you know, in state parks, uh, it's camping allowed. You have to wear a mask in a state park in New York. Are orthodontics, or, you know, are orthodontists, are they included in the, the dentist, um, order? And he has separated five active cases or less for counties, of which obviously mine would fall in. Why is it five? Why not, why is it twenty-five? I mean, twenty-five's still a very small number. Um, are, are water parks included? What, you know, when is, when a beauty salon is going to be allowed to be open? And the answer to that partially is, he's hoping barber shops, beauty salons, spas, May eighteenth. My question and my humble ask for the governor is going to be, if you are in a rural county with five or less cases, why don't we let the beauty salons and barber shops open now?
Absolutely.
You know, you know, those kinds of things. So there's several others. I don't want to bore you with all of them, but feel free, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. And I can add them to the governor's work.
If you don't mind, if you could copy me, on, email that, Senator, I'd appreciate that. You don't need to go over those now. Just send, if you do, if you would, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you, uh, jumping in here and, uh, sorry about the technical difficulties, but, uh.
Oh, no worries.
Uh, you're welcome to join us anytime. I appreciate you taking the time, Senator. Thank you very much. Uh, to get back to my topic here is, like Senator said, I think we need to open it up now where it makes sense. Let's let these business owners, mainly restaurants, use common sense. Let them determine how many they want to allow in. If it's twenty-five percent of their capacity, then it's twenty-five percent. They may want to let ten percent in. I don't know. But I'd, I'd like to say us, open up as much as we can here in Buick now. Why wait till Friday? Why wait till, why don't we wait till the, the thirtieth of, of, uh, May? Why the first of May? Why not the twenty-eighth of April? So that's my question. If it makes sense and it's safe, let's do it. So that's, that's what I'd like to consider y'all discussing.
I agree with you on one hand, but on the other hand, we have a lot of these business owners, I mean, the, the governor in his address this afternoon stated that one of the penalties would be if somebody were to report you to the state for opening prior to your designated deal, they'll pull your state licensure.
Is there a license for having a restaurant?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the bar.
There's licenses, restaurants, licenses, barrooms, hairdressers.
I understand that.
So if we as a city come up with something that is counter to what the governor has said, and the governor in his address said, his GAA team supersedes any local county, city, whatever that may be put out, then we basically, you know, are, think business owners aware of that? Or all they aware of is that my mayor and city council said it's okay? And then when their license gets pulled because somebody that is afraid of the law and reports them to the state, their license, are we liable because we told them it was okay to open? That's my, I'm, I'm not pulling one side or the other. I'm just saying this could be another one of those can of worms deal. Now, a way to potentially skip over a little bit of this is the, at a station, we could get, uh, Judge Lewis to possibly sign. It jumps us straight to phase two. Because we have five or less, if.
I thought we had six.
Well, but they're not actually in the county.
Okay, okay.
One was in Cook, so.
Okay, that's, that's.
And one was a bad address.
Right.
Active cases. We're not, we're not at five active.
Okay, that's good.
And I understand what you're saying, Diane, and when I saw this and it was brought to my attention late last, uh, Monday night at midnight that Colleyville did this. And I was on the phone with Colleyville City Manager, City Secretary, and later the mayor and three of the city councilmen. And this was after, uh, Governor Abbott heard about it. Governor did talk to the mayor and they're still open. And then Wichita Falls, I understand, just because they did it.
All I can, I, I didn't have that, I wasn't sitting on, on that conversation, so I can't say one way or the other. My concern is, like I said, somebody that's afraid of it calls the government agency that licenses the beauticians and complains that this one opened and it's not the right date yet and, you know, but I'm going to call.
And when I heard that Wichita Falls did this last Friday, I talked to Judge Lewis. And I said, Judge, are you aware of what just happened in Wichita Falls? He did not know.
Yeah.
And I said, Judge, it's all over the media, Facebook, internet. And he said, I don't care. I don't know anything about it. He was just absolutely, no, we're not going to do it. If the governor says. From him at all. Now, I understand he's got a position to do, take care of the county.
Yeah, but this is, this is because we do hit that five or less.
I understand, but Wichita Falls, I don't think he will. But Wichita Falls is still open.
Does phase two open up?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
But does it open up salons?
Yes, May eighteenth.
So that's basically would be the May eighteenth date.
Yeah, salons.
Which opens up the salons and stuff.
But the county, the county judge in Wichita backed the Wichita County and Wichita Falls, uh, action. They're still open.
Yeah.
And.
What we knew last Friday.
If the county judge.
Yep.
This, the judge didn't have this ability last Friday.
I know he didn't.
He does now. He has a legal leg to stand on to do it. And that may be what changes.
It may be.
I think it's worth asking if we could legally jump to phase two.
Falls is still standing behind theirs?
Yes, they are.
They heard that they were seen.
No, they still are. That was just a reminder. They're still open today. So is Colleyville. And Ma, and Nakona opened up their restaurant Saturday.
If, if, if the governor has said, if you have five cases, five or less active cases, this is your stature. I think we should move to that status.
But we, but the judge has to fill this on silent.
The governor's already told us.
The governor's told us.
Judge Lewis does not live here, moving. Okay, I live here. I fear that if we wait until May eighteenth, our downtown areas are going to look like somebody with a bunch of B C T.
Worse than it is today.
How many of these people are going to be able to open if we have to wait until May the eighteenth?
If the governor's already given us the authority to open at fifty percent, if we have five or less active cases, I say we go to that level. We've got the governor's authority to do that. And if Judge Lewis would like to join us, I would invite him to do so.
What is, what is that that you said that Judge Lewis would have to accomplish?
It says it's an, at a station.
Where did you get that document?
From the governor's website where I picked up the guidelines for business openings.
The Open Texas thing?
Page forty-four, the document.
Page forty-four? Okay. I haven't had a chance to read this. He just sent it out today, but.
Okay, so here is my thought process. I, I understand you and I feel with you and I am right there with you. My issue with going against the state is that you're going against the state.
But we're not going against the state. He just said.
And I agree. If the, if the guidelines say that we need to get Judge Lewis's sign, send it over to him, have him sign it, whatever.
But the gov, the governor didn't say, the governor didn't say.
That's in his god, that's in his.
From last week?
No, from the afternoon of two thirty. That's the process.
So the county judge has to re, reaffirm.
To attest that we have five or less cases.
Hey, hey, hold on just a second. Che, are you there with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Che, do you have anything to say here? Che is our attorney now. So Che, can you chime in on this and give us your legal interpretation or?
County retrospect, some things have been said, and the one thing that I think to be concerned about is, although, you know, we, we want to open up and, you know, I definitely agree with that and it's one of those things where the people are here close to these and then redirect the salon and so forth. I don't know about you, but every time I look in the mirror, I, I develop a, from the side, I'm, I'll hit you right. One thing I would caution about the legal standpoint is, uh, getting that because a lot of these employees and a lot of businesses are certified by the state of Texas, what is that going to do if we say, okay, it's fine, go ahead and open up? And they do and there's an adverse effect because of that, especially I. From what I've been told and what I understand, you know, for people that are working the salon and so forth, if they do open up and they, you know, start taking care of their, whatever they do, that they get a one-year suspension regardless of what the state said. One thing I do want to pay close attention to that it, we've kind of got some different things that have been said. One thing, uh, from the very beginning, when the governor was making these executive orders, we're, you know, we're not going, we start out, we're not going to do shelter in place. We're going to leave it up to the individual counties to kind of govern their own, you know, stations and so forth. But then today, he did make that comment that his orders supersede all local orders. So, well, you know, I'm kind of curious to see how that's going to play out because, you know, how is that going to play out in regards to Colleyville? How is that going to play out to Wichita Falls? You know, is, is there going to be some kind of backlash because of that? Some kind of curious to see how it is. Um, my legal opinion on it is essentially if we give in beer as much to the orders, then we kind of protect ourselves and consider maybe lawsuits or anything like that. Because, you know, one of the worst things I think that happens if we let in legal, you listen, then they're again, lost license and so forth, then what have we done?
Or it's analogous to grant money.
But now Che, Che, the, the governor said if you have five active. Judge Lewis, our county judge, is to certify that we have five cases or less. Because the governor has already stated, we can go to this level.
We're going to page two or whatever.
Right. So all we need is the judge to say, yeah, we have five cases or less open.
Right.
Because the governor's already set the, the level.
I would like to remind everyone here that we're here to represent citizens of Louis.
Can you speak up, Chuck, somebody in here?
Not the governor, not the president, not anyone else, our citizens. That's who we represent. If we don't get these businesses open and we wait, and, I mean, there's a chance we become sunset with no businesses. These small businesses are not, these small businesses are not going to survive to the May the eighteenth.
Yeah, but Chuck, the risk isn't worth the reward here. I mean, if I have a restaurant and they come in there and they take my license away for a year, I'm out of business just because of the decision we made in this regard.
Well, that has to be your choices.
Exactly. So I don't think, but we can't, we can't allow the people, because a lot of people don't know that.
But you're not.
And we can't sit there and make decisions for them with them not knowing. We need to have their best interests in our hands.
But the decision is for each individual business, whether or not they want to open up. We're not saying you have to open up.
Even if we go, even if we go to fifty percent, they can still choose.
Until Rick Lewis says we can, I, I don't see how we can.
Okay. I think we need to ask Bert to talk to the judge and see if we can get this signed. And if we can get this signed, then we could jump straight to phase two on Friday. We're talking for three days.
I'd love to. I'd love to open up, but I'm not, it costs my license, so.
Here's the other problem we have with bucking the state.
We're not bucking the state.
Well, no, and I agree with you, but if you, if you do it, if you go ahead and jump in and say, okay, we're open right now, three days early, then you are.
Well, no, I'm, I'm.
But here's, here's the deal. If you go against, if you go against the state, whether we like it or not, we get a lot of funding from the state.
The way I understand it today.
The state supports us, the state does things for us. You go against the state and the state comes back and says, okay, you want to be on your own, you're on your own.
The way I understood the governor today, if I can, Tammy, the way I understood the governor, it's two, two-thirty press conference, Friday, May first, we can open up the restaurants. That's three, four days from now.
Right.
So then if it's the consent of the council to wait those three or four days until May first, then we'll open up according to the governor's plans in that phase.
And I think we send the form over to and see if we can skip right on to phase two.
Absolutely.
I would like to add, we should pursue the county judge to open something fifty percent.
Absolutely.
He's the one that has to sign off on it.
Bert, let's, you and I see if we can't get on the judge's, uh, calendar tomorrow.
We all need to give him a call, then we're just going to give him a call.
Okay, if he refuses, what then?
Well, then we all going to have to give him a call.
We'll have a.
Well, all he's, all he's really doing is certifying that we have five or less active ca, cases in county.
Yeah.
Well, it, it all depends, I'm sure, in his vision of, like, one of the cases was.
Bert, can you speak up? I can't hear you.
But you had an address, he goes, another case, if they had, I'm going to balance it.
Hey, Bert, can you speak up? I can't hear you.
I said, the judge is going to look at it like this, if I had to, that, uh, the, uh, case, uh, there was one case where the person actually lived in Gainesville. There's another case where they had a sanctile address. There's another case where the people were in Wichita Falls. That dragged, he dropped six cases down to three. So I, I think that with reasoning like that, that, uh, the judge would probably get to that and just spec, that is up to the.
Fifty percent, okay.
But we're still at less than five active cases regardless of whether you count Gainesville or Wichita Falls.
We don't have any active case.
Okay. Okay, then I guess we'll just, uh.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I would actually like to see, um, a motion because by resolution twenty twenty oh eight is what we showed in May.
Right.
So I'd like to see a motion that we let that resolution expire and then just go by the, of the.
And that expires May, uh, April thirtieth at midnight?
No, it's, we let it open.
And until further notice, I think is the way it works. So we can just make that.
So I make a motion to end that.
End that.
Opening based on the governor's resolutions today pending the judge's signature.
Woo, you get all that, Sandy?
You get, you, you go with that?
Pending his, his acknowledgement that we have less than five cases and actually zero cases active in the county in Montague.
That's a long one. I agree.
I'll second that.
Okay. Whatever he said there, Sandy, if you got all that down.
I don't think I do. If I go back.
You go back here.
If you get it general.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Tammy, second it. Mister, Mister Bell, how do you vote? Ms. Higgins?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, you get that.
Mister Malone, how do you vote on that?
Aye.
Mister Love?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mister Kent?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next item. Sorry, folks, it took so long on that, but I felt it was important that we get that behind us. Uh, old business. Number one, renovation at three oh seven North Mason Street. That's this building here. And I know a lot of this happened before I got in this position and, um, I'd just like to ask, why do we need to renovate this building? Why do we need to move four people out of the old existing city hall offices into this building? Why do we need that?
So the police department can have the space that they require. That's the whole purpose of it.
Yes.
Okay.
And they do in fact need it.
And I agree.
And we need to do this.
Why do we need?
But I thought we discussed this several council meetings ago. But I thought we discussed this several council meetings ago, that we were still in agreement with it, but it was being postponed until we could see how we were affected by the COVID reduction of income.
Well, I agree with the police department. I know they need the room. Uh, and I know since all this was put into place last year or two years ago about renovating this building and putting four people in this building, I feel like that's a waste of money and a waste of space to tear down this building, not tear it down to renovate this building for four people. Now, I know the police needs space. Has anybody given any thought to maybe putting a, one of these metal buildings in that parking lot where the old auditorium was?
Here's, here's what, here's what happened. The previous council has already allocated funds for this building. It's already there. We've already, everyone agreed on it, so maybe one.
I understand that Mister Love, but just because it was approved in the budget, there's money in the budget, do we need to spend that money today based on?
It's a restricted account.
Yes.
It can only be spent for renovations.
Based upon the current economic situation in the world, in the county, the state, and the city of Bowie, do we need to spend that money, even though it's been approved? Yes, sir.
I have some thoughts on that.
Yes, sir.
I was, I was of that mind at first, thinking this is not a good time to spend that money. But, on the other hand, getting back to the economy, spending this money will further stimulate the economy, and the money is already there set aside. And I think at this time, any money that can be put into the economy really supersedes everything else.
So the money to spend.
In my mind, it will be of great, of greater benefit to spend this money than to not spend it.
Yeah, let me ask you a question here for clarification. Spend that money to renovate this building?
Yes, sir.
And how's that going to stimulate the Bowie economy when none of the contractors are local contractors?
They'll be eating here, they'll be filling the gas tanks here, they might be buying some of their supplies locally if they don't bring with them what they need. They could even, depending on the length of the day and what's happening, they might even put heads in bed.
I understand, it's a possibility, but if, if one of these contractors is from Wichita Falls, they may not rent motels, they may buy some lunches.
They may not, but they'll be buying lunches, they'll be filling the tanks, they'll be.
Understand.
And we, we've actually reached out to local contractors here in Bowie.
I understand, I understand, but I'm saying is.
We tried.
I, I understand that. I wish somebody locally would have bid on it.
True, so do I.
But mine just have a problem spending that much money right now today.
It's a hundred thousand dollars under budget coming out of a restricted account where the money's already.
But it's real money that doesn't need to be spent, in my opinion.
To me, it's, it's helping our economy, it's putting.
I agree, hundred percent, I do.
I mean, Jason's Restaurant is right across the street from everybody working.
But you don't think the economy affects us as much as our economy affects them?
Yeah.
Okay, I've said my piece on that, on the renovation.
So, I'm not opposed to renovating the building. I, I think it's a good plan for expansion. My concern is, is not spending the money on this, it's not spending the money on any one particular thing, it's spending money, period, at this particular point. You know, can we postpone it for a couple of weeks? Can we, you know, push it down the road a, a month so that we can see what the effects of our businesses being shut down for as long as they have been is actual, where we have actual numbers to look at and see what that affects. Or, you know, anything at this point in time.
I, that point is well made, but then let me ask this question. If this money is set aside specifically for this project and we never spend it, are we going to have to revote or something to move that money into our general fund or what? Can we even do that?
Yes, at the end of the year, all appropriations expire and everything goes back to be re-appropriated in a new budget, so.
Okay, okay.
Okay, since this was an agenda item to be discussed and voted on, how do we want to proceed with this agenda item on renovation at three oh seven North Mason Street? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we move ahead and put the money.
Got the architect that Jay Newton and I went over the plans and the two low bidders, we gave them an opportunity. Uh, there was ten changes that we had, uh, that we didn't identify, go after, we had opened the bids, uh, and so we gave both of them an opportunity. Changes that we did. Uh, at the rate, uh, the low bidder, which was Gary Baker Construction, uh, changed it from. One eighty-nine, seven fifty to one seventy-nine, nine zero. Oh, nearly twenty thousand dollars left.
He changed it from what, one eighty-nine, seven fifty to what?
One seven zero, nine nine zero.
And this is after we opened those bids the other day, okay? And he's out of Wichita Falls?
Yeah.
Okay. And how much did we spend on the architects and the engineers? Do you recall Bert, to draw up the plans?
Well, about seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand for both the architect and the engineers' costs?
There wasn't any engineering at all.
Just architect or plans, okay. So seventeen thousand we've already spent for the architect on this remodel, plus this hundred and seventy-one thousand almost to do the renovation, okay? So what was your motion Diane?
I make the motion that we move forward with the project and pump the money into the economy.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it. Go ahead Chuck. It's all you. No, sir, it's yours.
I want you to have it, sir.
Okay.
I'll take it.
Okay, before we move, just one more little discussion. So if, okay. See, I'm so on the fence.
Yeah, I just.
If we delay it and we're going to.
When I worked for the bank, it was, you know, the.
I mean, I agree with you.
I, I, all I can hear is Linda Tinsley in my ear, you've got to spend money to make money.
And I, and I, I mean, I've talked to other cities and they say the same thing.
I mean, phase four.
I actually even talked to them about this particular thing. I was like, I'm so, I mean, do you wait, do you, whatever? And, and their response has been, you know, no, now is when they tell you pump the money into the economy. Dump it, dump, sit on it. If you've got a construction project, do it. It just makes me so nervous.
I know.
Yep.
Phase four of the bailout at the federal level that they're discussing now includes funding for city infrastructure projects. So there is a good chance if we move forward with this, we may be able to submit the project for a grant for reimbursement and then turn around and put that money in the fire department or the library or.
And I, I mean, I, I, I understand.
Whereas if we just bury it, it's gone and there's no.
I mean, that was the whole premise in the depression, the, the construction projects that they did was.
Yeah. But like I said, there's a good chance if this phase four goes through, now obviously it's Washington, it's got to get a battle, but if phase four goes through, there's a good chance we could wind up getting all of that money back in a grant and turn around and be able to do another city project that hopefully somebody could local would build.
Ms. Buckmaster, does that, you have any other questions on that?
No, I can't.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Well, and I would say also that since the money's already been allocated and we're in depressive times and the money to build this has dropped significantly, I would say that in the future it probably costs us more, so I say.
Okay. Okay, Mister Kent, how do you vote on this motion?
Aye.
Ms. Buckmaster?
Aye.
Mister Love?
Aye.
Mister Malone?
Aye.
Mister Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Okay, next item is.
In order, Mr. Mayor, you need to pick out the low bidder.
Well, that's the next item.
We're fixing to.
That's the next agenda item. Next agenda item, number eight, two, consider bids for renovation of three oh seven North Mason. And in your packet, you have those bids, and we had a correction or an update to the, uh, the third one listed there on your chart. So we've got one, two, three, four bids. First company is from Bridgeport, the second one's from Wichita Falls, the third one's from Wichita Falls, and the fourth one's from Wichita Falls. So you see the prices and you see who they are.
Bert, have we had any dealings with any of these four?
Do what?